Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Colonial School District Board Meeting. It is Thursday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, and with this love, courage, and justice for all.
The board met in executive session prior to this meeting to review the personnel report and several settlement agreements. Teachers' negotiations and student discipline issues were also discussed. The meeting lasted approximately one hour. And now I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Christian for some of our student recommendations this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Petruino. We have much to be proud of here in Colonial, specifically at Plymouth White Marsh High School. We had championship teams in football, girls soccer, boys cross-country, first ever in school history, sports cross-country, and field hockey. This evening, we are recognizing our football team and our girls soccer team. In December, we have invited our cross-country and field hockey teams. It's a wonderful problem to have, but you have too many teams and too many kids to recognize in one evening. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Coach Day to introduce the football team who had announced the end of the season.
Hi, everyone. First of all, to our board of school directors, Dr. Christian, and our entire school community, thank you for having our team here tonight to recognize the achievements of our young men and women and coaches in our program. I am extremely proud to be up here to recognize the efforts of everyone involved. And I know that without a doubt, it starts with all of you guys sitting up here today. I know that it's impossible to run a successful athletic program without the support of our school board and our administration. So thank you for always having the best interest of our student athletes in mind and for providing the resources for our young men and women to thrive in the athletic fields. I'm a huge supporter and advocate for the importance of athletics in our schools, and I am thankful for all of you for providing an environment where athletics are valued and prioritized. I also want to thank our parents, our families, and our community members for the countless hours of work, donations, and encouragement throughout the entire season. This year's football team was really a tale of two stories. You know, we had been here very, very young with little experience returning, and we definitely went through our growing pains. After the first four games, we were one grade, and many people counted us out. But the resilience, the work ethic, the commitment of these young men is a real testament to their character. And their improvement each day led to some amazing accomplishments amongst this group. We won our next six straight games, secured a playoff berth, and took the number-one seed in the district to the final seconds in their closest game of the season. This year, we won our fifth consecutive suburban one American League championship. No player on this team has ever lost a suburban one American League game. And with that in mind, we have voluntarily moved up a league to the Continental Conference next year to face some of the larger schools in our area. And we are very excited for the challenge that awaits us in the coming years. This year's team includes fifteen All-League selections, highlighted by eight first-team All-League players. We also have players who passed the one-thousand-yard rushing mark and players who led the league in sacks, tackles, interceptions, and touchdowns. But most importantly, we have a group of young men and women who are selfless student athletes, committed to the ideals of team and family. We hold each other accountable, we encourage each other when adversity hits, and we celebrate both small and large wins together. I truly believe that football and sports in general brings out the best in all of us when guided and used correctly. Please help me welcome the twenty-twenty-five Plymouth White Marsh Colonial Football Family. I'd like to start with some of our most important members, our two managers, Bella Dorky-Darty, Lily Foster. We have one freshman joining our junior varsity, Brody Amplo. Our sophomore class, Jed Patanga, Kair Lindsay, A.J. Miller, Chase Mopas, Wyatt Neman, Tristan O'Brien, Chris Robinson, Jack Sagowski, Liam Ward, Mason Wright. Our junior class, Colin Calanets, Kamani Davis, Frankie Davis, Charlie Manati, Mike Tangilio, Fidel Green, Jack Jimoli, Alex Cribble, Tony McCallum, Max Montemayor, Aiden Aremski, Cole Riley, Barry Stridner, Chase Tavio, and David Dorky. And this year's senior class, Cole Ashbridge, Captain Mike Bogard, Captain Amir Wuthler, Hunter DeScala, Captain Chase Stumpfels, Ray Gonzalez, Will Jamison, Trayvon Lindsay, Jaden Lockhart, Aiden Matt Mopas, and Captain Roman Powell. And our coaches, Coach Paul Porcevis, Coach Steve Maruso, Coach Ronnie Throde, Coach David Leiter, Coach Dan McDonald, Coach Saint Martin Lawrence, and Coach Non-Hey Wilson. All right. So we know the drill. We're people on the block.
Up next, I'd like to welcome the devoted coach, Delusion, to recognize our championship girls soccer team.
Good evening, Colonial School Board, Dr. Christian and Colonial admin. On behalf of the PW girls soccer team, I'd like to thank the Colonial School Board for this invitation tonight. My name is TJ Delusion. I'm proud to represent this group as their head coach. A few weeks ago, we concluded one of the best seasons in PW girls soccer history. Thanks here every year. We're not. All right, so this is new for us. The team finished the regular season with fourteen wins, three losses, and one draw. In the league, the team went nine-and-one, earning a league championship outright. This was the program's first league title since twenty thirteen. Through the eighteen-game regular season, our team only gave up ten goals while scoring forty-three. We held our opponents scoreless in eleven of those eighteen regular season games. In recognition of our successful season, our team was awarded a program-record seven spots on the suburban one literary division All-League team. Matthew Gunkin was named first-team All-League and Player of the Year runner-up, the second player in program history to receive that honor. Matty Lazaroff was named first-team... Second-team All-League were Olivia Bragg, Marley Burton, Molly McAvoy, and Kira Wheeler, and J.J. Lafferty was awarded All-League Honorable Mention. To begin district playoffs, we earned a home night game in the first round, will be advanced, beating Phoenixville four-nothing. That was our twelfth shutout of the season. As a team, we were playing our best soccer at the end of the year, which gave us confidence heading into our second-round game at the Chaminade. Our season ended there unfortunately in a wong-bong game. The Chaminade was awarded a penalty kick with less than a minute to go in regulation. While that was a frustrating way for our season to end, it doesn't take away from the incredible accomplishments of this team. Thank you to our senior class, who earned a playoff berth all four years of their career, which was the first time in program history. The coaches and the underclassmen look forward to next year where we'll continue to build on this success. At this time, I'll call up each member of our team to receive a certificate of recognition. Not present tonight due to prior arrangements are Lori Flannery, Maddie Vaklun, Sophie Nagle, Liv Petit. Here with us tonight, Senior Mia Barrett, Senior Olivia Bragg, Senior Liv Brutus, Senior Marley Burton, Junior Francesca DeLuca, Junior Lizzie Jackson, Senior Kayane Hayo, Senior Vinte Hayo, Freshman J.J. Lafferty, Junior Patty Lazaroff, Senior Molly McAvoy. Freshman Molly McAvoy, sorry. Plays like a senior. Senior Matty Gunkin, Sophomore Gianna Gorgola, Sophomore Harper Riley, Senior Kira Wheeler, and Junior Bella Zioli. Thank you again to Dr. Christian and Colonial School Board for recognizing the two thousand twenty-five Plymouth White Marsh League championship girls soccer team.
Before we continue with our board business meeting, I just want to say congratulations to both the football and girls soccer teams. It is always great to see teams be successful and field. We know seasons generally, whether the pro, college, or high school, are measured by wins and losses. But I continue from seeing both of these teams compete, as well as next month, where we have our field hockey and cross-country teams here. The B-division teams, my alma mater themselves, all are off the table. And we have class acts for children and student athletes that participate on our teams. For exhibit sportsmanship, when they may lose, and charities, PW names, so we're very, very happy and proud of them. And as a parent of three student athletes, two former student athletes who occurred, I certainly respect and appreciate all the time and effort our parents and guardians put in from ages five until eighteen to support the kids and their endeavors. We appreciate them sharing their pressure carving with us. Congratulations to our teams. I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Petruino for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the approval of minutes. This is a motion to approve minutes as presented in items four B through four G. May I have a second, please? Sharon, any questions or comments? May I have? Thank you. This is a motion to approve financial reports as presented in items five B through five M for October twenty twenty-five. May I have a second, please? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion to approve the treasurer's report. May I have a second, please? Rashida, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now, is there any public comment on any items on this evening's agenda? All right, seeing that, I will turn the meeting back over to Dr. Christian.
Thank you. Item A, A, B, and C, motion to approve the personnel report and extracurricular contracts is outlined in item Z, B, and C. Board action is requested for recommending personnel changes. Appointments for promotion, employment, or transfer are subject to the presentation of valid credentials, employment verification documentation, and state mandated requirements.
May I have a second, please? Gail, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. And now I will turn the meeting over to our student representatives.
Thank you. For PW, induction night was on October thirtieth. Congratulations to our new inductees for the music, art, business, and national honor societies. Winter sports are underway. Congrats to all of our fall sports teams on a successful end to their seasons. Colonial players performed an amazing performance in the pool last week in the ball play, but looking forward to their musical called Something Rye coming up this spring.
Next is Colonial Middle School. Regarding the Colonial Middle School Special Education year trip, the students in the special education program attended a community trip that is so much to give inclusive Kappa, an inclusive organization based around incorporating people with disabilities. They practiced how to order their food and learned about potential job opportunities. After lunch, they went to visit Mariney Farm to see the garden animals and enjoy their famous ice cream. Next is the Grade Six Musical. On November seventh and eighth, seventy-five sixth-grade students presented Shrek the Musical, hits to a packed audience with three shows. The students put together an amazing production in just five, four weeks and earned every ovation deserved. The cast crew and staff all worked together and gave these students a great start to their CSE theater journey. Grade Jack, sixth grade, join us for a meet-goals junior, the seventh and eighth grade production on March sixth, seventh, and eighth. Regarding NJHS, ninety-six students were inducted into NJHS on October twenty-ninth. To be invited to the fight, students must appear in distinguished honor roll for all of sixth and seventh grade. Their first service project was creating veteran state cards on November third. They got bright to work.
For CES, Trailblazer Awards were given out on October third, in October, to three students for clustered for outstanding performance in following areas, demonstrating respect, responsibility, and safety in good choices. Fall Festival was held on Thursday, October thirtieth, with a parade followed by classroom parties. Fourth-grade open gyms have started with over ninety students participating. All fifth-grade students visited the Museum of the American Revolution this month.
Next is Wood Elementary. The PE second-grade concert was held on November eleventh. As always, this was a great celebration of the arts.
For Contra Hocken Elementary, on Friday, November seventh, CE students had a special assembly with the Elmwood Park Zoo, who came to help CE launch our One Book, One School initiative using the book, related by Catherine Appleby, where the main character lives in the woods surrounded by animals. CE held a lovely veteran's day breakfast on November eleventh for families who are or have served our country. Our third graders performed a selection of patriotic songs on our desk, and then veterans who visited classrooms bestowed their students. Thank you to Miss Donovan, Mrs. Capello, Mr. Lowry, and Ms. Williams for playing a special event at CE. CE welcomes artists all over Wayneable on Friday, November fourteen, for two interactive assemblies with the students.
Continuing with Contra Hocken Elementary, CE will celebrate American Education Week November seventeenth to the twenty-first, and will recognize the contributions of educators, school staff, and families who support quality education. During this week, we plan to spotlight our partnership with our families to encourage reading. Students and staff will be packing the piggies while the water is decorated as pigs. For Treehouse Books, which is a library and literacy center that distributes thousands of books to children and adults. We are also collecting non-perishable food items that will be donated to the Colonial Neighborhood Council. CE is also excited to host the Contra Hocken Senior Luncheon on Friday, November twenty-first. Our third graders will serve our guests their Thanksgiving meal. Many thanks to CE helping hands who made part of the favor and support the guests.
For Ridge Park, our local fire department and city McDonald will join us for our monthly fire drill during Fire Prevention Month. Students and staff did an incredible job of both drills, along with our local firefighters. Retired Ridge Park teacher Donna Stern hosted Fire Safety Summit. Students were able to watch staff members get in and out of the fire here, learning about being safe at home and seeing the fire trucks. During the week on October sixth, students and staff participated in no-place-for-hate kickoff activities. We celebrated Red River Week at the end of October. The theme was Life is a Puzzle, Solid Backing, and Good Choices. Students participated in a variety of activities during the week, including a scout trip around the school.
Last is White Marsh Elementary. On Tuesday, November eleventh, White Marsh Elementary invited students to Bray Event to school. This annual event is held to honor our veterans and show our appreciation for their service. A school-wide assembly was held where students introduced the veterans that they brought to school. All students, staff, and veterans participated in a patriotic sing-along. Following the assembly, veterans went to classrooms to share stories with students. Lunch was provided for all the veterans by mission barbecue. On Friday, October thirty-first, we invited families to our annual fall party. Students were able to parade around the school, and families had the opportunity to admire all the creative and fun costumes. Students also participated in their annual fall parties throughout the day. During the party, students played games and competed in crafts provided by competition. All right, that's all we have for today. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Always great to hear what's going on in all of our schools. And now, who is Mr. Frank?
It's a motion to accept and approve the audit report for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year and approvals submitted in PDE twenty-two oh five seven, annual financial report to PDE.
May I have a second, please? Jerry, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
It's a motion to approve the attached resolution to opt out of the Act One timeline by certifying that the district will not raise the real estate tax rate in excess of the twenty-six, twenty-seven Act One index of three point five percent. This motion also certifies that this school issue will be unable to use the Act One exceptions included in the law.
May I have a second, please? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
It's a motion to approve the attached resolution to opt out of the Act One timeline by certifying that the district will not raise the real estate tax. Oh, sorry. It's a motion to approve the proposed budgets for the PW HHS fall production of Clue and CMS production of Shrek Kids. This approval will offer as payments, payment-specified compensation as submitted in the budgets.
May I have a second, please? Rashida, any questions or comments?
I just want to say both shows were absolutely phenomenal. The talent of our students in our sixth grade with Shrek, and then the two casts at the high school for Clue, it was absolutely outstanding. So congratulations to everybody involved in those productions. Excited for the ones in the spring.
All in favor? Thank you. Yep.
This is a motion to approve an independent consulting contract to provide HR consulting services at the rate of one hundred billion.
May I have a second, please? Will, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve an independent transportation contract to provide transportation for two students from October sixth, twenty twenty-five through June fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, at the current IRS rate of seven cents for the established IRS rate per mile of faster zone.
May I have a second, please? Rashida, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. Chris?
Motion to approve the educational services contracts outlined below for Overbrook School and for the Bucks County IED.
May I have a second? Sharon, any questions or comments? All in favor?
Motion to approve the establishment of an education fund for legitimate educational expenses. Due to its confidentiality, this agreement was discussed in executive session.
May I have a second, please? Gail, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the settlement and release agreement between the Colonial School District and Wade Number One Zero Four, Grade Six, as presented.
May I have a second, please? Chris, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the settlement and release agreement between the Colonial School District and the Pennsylvania Leadership Charter School as presented.
May I have a second? Sharon, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
This is a motion to approve the list, excuse me, the list of contracted bus drivers outlined in Mr. Christopher Brown's memo to Dr. Christian dated October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. The Pennsylvania Department of Education requires all school bus drivers to be approved by the Lord Angling, attached as a comprehensive list of all occurring drivers to date.
May I have a second, please? Rick, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve board policies outlined below on a secondary basis as presented. Policy two thirty-seven for electronic devices and policy six sixteen for payment pills.
May I have a second, please? Gail, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve the board policies outlined below on a first-year basis. Both policies were reviewed at their respective November committee meetings. Policy three oh seven regarding student teachers and interns and policy eight twenty-two, automated external defibrillator, and cardiovalvular resuscitation.
May I have a second, please? Rashida, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion to approve the deletion of board policies outlined below as the language can now be found in board policy two thirty-seven, I was just mentioned minutes ago, regarding electronic devices. Policy eight fifteen point one and policy eight sixteen.
May I have a second, please? Rick, any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you. This is a motion, the Colonial School District Board of Directors set the start date for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. At the August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five board meeting, board approval is now requested for the K-to-twelve calendar for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year as presented. May I have a second to that motion, please? Will, any questions or comments?
Just pending board approval this evening, as we will advertise this as possible to families so they can plan for next year.
Great, thank you. All in favor? Sharon?
This is a motion to approve the courses outlined below for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. These courses were reviewed at the November tenth, twenty-fives curriculum committee These courses were reviewed at the November 10th, 25th Curriculum Committee of the Board meeting. Those two courses are AP Cybersecurity and AP Business with Personal Finance.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor?
This is a motion to approve the Plymouth White Marsh High School Program of Studies for the 2627 school year as presented.
May I have a second, please? Will? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
And this is a motion to approve the conference requests outlined below. These requests were again reviewed at the November 10th, 25th Curriculum Committee meeting of the Board. PE Reading Specialist Elizabeth Morris and Jennifer Ranson to attend the Title I Improving Schools Conference in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania from January 25th through the 28th. And Plymouth White Marsh High School Social Studies teacher Christopher Maniero to attend the National Council for Social Studies Conference in Washington D.C. from December 5th through 6th, 2025.
May I have a second, please? Rashida? Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Motion for approval for four DECA students and PW H S DECA advisor Mrs. Becker to attend the DECA Sports and Entertainment Marketing Conference in Orlando, Florida from January 28th to February 1st, 2026, and there is no cost to the district.
May I have a second, please? Rick? Any questions or comments?
Just a comment, when DECA goes on the competitions, the district does a lot to that to cover the cost. This is an extra conference to go in some ways as well, but it's beyond the scope of the budget.
All in favor? Thank you. And now, is there a solicitor's report this evening?
No report.
Alright, now we'll move on to our committee reports. Chris?
For CRSL Safety and Wellness, Dr. Figaro, I will treat for the monthly equity inclusion and belonging activities this year. Our administrators have been meeting with student organizations and clubs to empower them, make donations, and hear their thoughts on how the district can continue developing a sense of belonging for all students. It's really great to have their feet back firsthand and be able to make, you know, some improvements out there. And also, we had Mrs. Lester reported on several efforts that are taking place to support students and families with food insecurity. We've referenced communication that's been shared about the status with the SNAP program benefits and free breakfast and discussed the initiative that really takes place tomorrow, the big day of our Stuff-A-Bus Food Drive. We've had a friendly competition among the schools, and we've actually had to require a third bus to help accommodate all, we may not even know, but I don't know what's gonna happen overnight, but anyway, as of today, Ridge Park has fifteen hundred and one million food items, and we believe CES has doubled that, can't we? And we have five hours of students participating, as well as the district office in conjunction with the school board. All of the proceeds of all of these collective items are going to two different organizations within the district, the Colonial Neighborhood Council and one other. So it will go right into our community, and it's such a I really mean things to see the kids all excited and the staff members dressing up and all kinds of shenanigans happening to get everybody excited and we're so thankful to be able to help in our community.
Thank you. Sharon, curriculum?
Sure, so at our Curriculum Committee of the Board, as you mentioned, Dr. McConney and Sir Price proposed the two new AP courses this year. We just want to note that the two courses are part of the College Board's AP Career Kickstart Initiative, which is designed to expand access to AP coursework and prepare students for college Hank career activities. Also adding, this is full of checkmate update on the Hour of AI, formerly known as the Hour of Clue. The lessons and activities within the Hour of AI will provide a hands-on introduction to AI, artificial intelligence, designed for students degrees two through five. Letters will be sent home to inform families and provide links to resources to support the Hour of AI. Dr. Gervais also reviewed the 2025 Summer Academy Program's funding expenditures and attendance summaries, as well as some of the data. She included with recommendations to help guide the 2026 Summer Academy proposal and potential enrichment opportunities for Summer 26. I'd like to thank Dr. Gervais and her team for putting together such a comprehensive review, also to our families who gave input so that we can make informed decisions as we move forward. And then lastly, we discussed the conferences that we just approved.
Great, thank you so much. Will, facilities and transportation?
I have no report for this one.
Thank you. Rick, finance?
The finance committee had on Monday, November 3rd. We discussed that in the photo on tonight, the focus on changing on the Act One index. We also reviewed the 25.6 budget comparison. I'd like to thank the district business office on the Clean Water Report, the best we can. The financial results of 24.5 on the finance side, the company presented the finance committee meeting in November 3rd cannot differ from what was reported by our local independent audit firm. We go through detail the financial results and activities at the January 25 finance committee meeting.
Bichak, Gail?
No report.
Chris? No report for CMTHS. Anything for the community?
No report.
Sharon, legislative?
We have a budget. Pennsylvania, I would pass the budget and just a couple highlights related to education, if you're not aware already. There was a hundred million dollars placed, passed in basic education funding to support districts that have not been adequately funded for previous lawsuit in the state of Pennsylvania. Colonial School District will gain approximately two hundred twenty-seven thousand from that from that piece. There was also ten million dollars put into the budget to fund early literacy initiatives, along with legislative language that requires teacher training, curriculum, and universal screening, in alignment with the science of reading. Certainly want to shout out our district because we are already there and doing a lot of those great things, but just want to emphasize the importance of that. And excited that the student teacher stipend is continuing to grow. So we were at twenty million last year, they added another ten million, so we'll be at thirty million. The goal in Pennsylvania is fifty million to match and meet what we need for our students who are coming through pipelines. So, yeah, excited, we have a budget.
Thank you. Do we have any community reports? Are there any more townships? Should we take this moment to thank Mr. William Winchester? And he will be serving, leaving us here at Colonial School District, but moving on to Plymouth Township where he will serve in a different capacity. So, congratulations. May I have you descend all your reports to us and we will share them out for you?
Yeah, I definitely will. I mean, I just want to thank you all. It's been a great four years. Done a lot of things. Opened the middle school and changed the school and masking and replacing board members, it's been a lot that's happened. And I'd like to just thank all of you for helping me along the way and for voting for me back then. And now, I just want to keep making sure that I'm doing everything by all of you. So, I'm not going anywhere, so I'll stop there.
Will, being a senior school board member is a thankless, and that's not many could know. School board members are volunteers. And you quickly learn that even though we told you it was gonna be two nights a month, it's not. And it's a 24/7 job, whether you're pumping gas or in the supermarket or just in the community, or actually performing your functions as a school board member. You have always put students first from day one. You've been selfless in your leadership and we certainly appreciate your contribution and support, not only to the school, but most importantly, to the charter of the union. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your four years. And also for your work with the textbook beam on their J O C as well. So that's a lot of additional hours that we volunteer with as well. I really appreciate that, the sacrifices that you made to be able to do this.
And I'll just, Will, so thank you, so sad to see you go, but also wish you well and a new opportunity. Well, I ran, it's been a first four years, so being a good friend as a mentorship process, so thank you.
And now, Jeremy, anything from the foundation?
To me, I can ask, I know what the substance said regarding giving back to the community during this time of Thanksgiving, even Tuesday, you're in a plan, please consider contributing to the Colonial School District Foundation with the process of giving out grants to needy families in this community. And also support the school district in terms of programs and scholarships, very critical. You know, good ones going on in the society right now, trying to give back to the school that are less fortunate. You can go to colonialSD.org/corporation to contribute. Any small amount helps, but again, during this time of giving, please remember the foundation to be continued. The Food for Thought campaign, trying to ensure that all of our students and community members don't have to worry about that on the beginning.
Great, thank you. Also attached to tonight's agenda for your information are the school activity accounts for CMS and PW, athletic accounts for CMS and PW, building reports, curriculum, instruction, and assessment reports, as well as a technology report. And now, is there any public comment this evening? Alright, seeing none, is there any additional board comments this evening?
Yes, I just wish everyone to have a great Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Alright, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.